Special meeting to order.
Roll call for this special city council meeting of Wednesday, June 8th at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
As always, we ask that we remember those in our community that are less fortunate than we are, remember those who have lost loved ones, remember our young people and the whole of our community that have been traumatized by this violence even just as recent as the last two days. We ask our God and our Creator to give us the wisdom and the right information and the right attitude to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Mr. President, special prayers out to Mrs. Arrington's family. She lost two members of her family within a week.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Do we need to approve them? Oh, there is no approval of minutes, right? Okay, I'm sorry. Citizens to be heard. First citizen to register was Mr. Randy Barnes. Is Mr. Randy Barnes here?
Good morning, President, Council, Administration, guests. My name is Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point. We're here today for a pretty important meeting. Not knowing what's going to happen, from my perspective, it looks like we have four white guys are going to decide whether to give the administration another headcount at a taxpayer cost of $70,000 or give half a dozen of the minority community development centers $40,000. It's kind of ironic that in that CZB report came out that the first thing we need to do is increase the size of government because we have five code enforcement officers today and they can't do the job because they have, remember, I gave you all a sheet this morning and the analysis is they have one complaint in the morning to deal with and they have one complaint in the afternoon to deal with. But somehow the administration has said this CDBG money needs to go for another code enforcement officer. The sheet I left all of you says that if each one of those code enforcement officers could do one extra complaint in the morning, one day, and another extra complaint another day, it'd be the equivalent of having another code enforcement officer. So I think we're here today and I think we've seen in the past half a dozen, dozen years, or maybe even longer, that our governments failed us. We basically admit that we can't enforce code violations along the Bayfront with the five people we have. We have to take money from this grant, which is already $400,000 or so going to code enforcement. We have to take more of it because we're a failure. We don't know how to allocate our resources to the Bayfront and take care of those code violations. First thing we have to do is increase the size of government because, well, that's the way it's always been. The status quo, let's continue to just pour money into things that don't work. You know, you all sit up there and you look across through the window and look at the Treasurer's Office. What goes on in the Treasurer's Office? Well, we don't want to change that because that's the status quo. As Mr. Winarski said last week about the EMTA, we don't need change. Everything is good. We don't need change. A lot of members of council like to keep things the way they are, like rubber stamping, whatever the administration asked for on these CDBG grants. Keeping the buses running while increases the taxes to the city residents keep those buses running. Keeping all that extra staff in the Treasurer's Office that's not needed. You know, until you clean up your own house and the administration, you work with administration, don't come to the taxpayer and say, "We need another code enforcement officer at $70,000. We need to increase the footprint of government." So then it's an important vote today and Mr. Witherspoon and several of you made the point that, you know, there's only so much dollars, there was no conflict. But soon as council, some members said, "Hey, we want to give a little bit extra to these minority centers," it all of a sudden became a conflict. It's a lot of noise. It's a lot of noise. It's got to distract us with what's really going on in the city. And we're in a slow downward spiral until people like the council people that made that decision, so, just said, "You know what? We don't have to go with what the administration says on everything. We can take a little piece of that pie and spread it out a little bit, maybe do some good in this, these community development centers." So hope with that in mind this morning when you go take this vote, I think this is a vote that has implications for the primary next May. And hey, whether it's racist to say it or not, but if you have four white guys vote to give the administration what they want and take this money from the community development centers, what makes you think any one of you four white guys will ever get another black person to vote for you in this city? Now, I can't sugarcoat it. And I know the seven of you have to. You have to say nice things and be nice to each other and say nice things about the way things are going on. But the citizens don't necessarily have to because we see it, we can say it the way it is. So I do implore you today to think about your vote real long and hard and see your way to, forget the $40,000, give the whole $70,000 to those centers. Let's see how that would impact the area for the next summer. Hey, thank you very much for your time. Best of luck to all of you.
Next citizen to be heard, Mr. Gary Horton.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
My name is Gary Horton and I, 2046 East 19th Street. It's with mixed emotions that I stand here again this morning also too because my family also was touched by the recent violence that occurred in Erie. And it has people in certain inner-city neighborhoods asking what's going to happen next. It hasn't even gotten hot yet. And the city's response seems to only be a police response. Police-only response. I've stood up here several times and talked about John Horan, who you all admire, and note the accomplishments that he made at the Housing Authority. And yet, we don't do what John Horan did when we have the opportunity to. Defunding the three neighborhood centers and other organizations who serve people on the, who are on the front line, serving people in these impoverished neighborhoods. Defunding them is not an answer. Asking them to go find funding somewhere else isn't either. There was no citizens' participation in this process. If we had citizens' participation, we wouldn't be here today. The administration failed to listen to the citizenry who came here and complained, who wanted to be included. God bless the three of you who put your own reputation on the line to try to make sure some of us have resources to serve people who come in and out of our neighborhood centers every day. We simply asked for a fair share. Fair share funding. $24,000 for six minority or urban agencies. $24,000. Nothing for my agency. $6,000 for the Booker T. Washington Center. $6,000 for the Martin Luther King Center and $12,000 for the John F. Kennedy Center. Who wouldn't have right mind believes that that's adequate? And then to give St. Martin's Center $25,000, more than the five or six of us together, to give the Y, one organization, $50,000. Now, no one is saying those places don't do good work, but a citizen's participation, real citizen's participation would have been more inclusive. City Council wouldn't be embroiled in this snafu today. I'd like to know who raised these conflicts and why. And the person we think in the administration who raised them, who in the Solicitor's Office raised conflict when she moved from a federal program down to the Redevelopment Authority, which she funded and took a $90,000 job at the Redevelopment Authority? Where was HUD? Where was the state ethics? Where was the Solicitor? It has a perception of enriching herself conflict. And then to move the Redevelopment Authority in City Hall and then to go back up to that job in the federal program and take the $90,000 salary with her. That's, sounds like a conflict to me. Who raised that conflict? Over $6,000, $6,000 and $12,000 when the Director of Federal Programs has enriched herself to a $90,000 job over an agency that she funded out of these monies? Where was HUD? Citizens' participation is a requirement of the process. Special attention to second language learners or English, non-English speaking people is a part of the process. Where was that done? When was that done? The use of the money could be better used than to just take the lion's share of it and put it into overtime for police. Now, the police have a tough job. They do a good job and they're not the problem. The administration taking all of the money and putting it into overtime is the problem. Where's the fairness to that? You don't build trust that way with organizations on the front line dealing with the same issues that the police do. You build the trust by, by putting, investing in those organizations also. It builds community relations between those organizations and the citizens they serve and the police department, helping us all try to have a better community, a safer community. And then to...
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Any other citizens to be heard?
My name's Richard Wagner, 4228 State Street, Erie, Pennsylvania. And this is an important meeting. And I hate to say this, but I don't think any of you guys are lawyers. There's an empty seat over there. Okay. I'm going to deviate a little bit. Our county, which includes the city, was just treated to a loss of over $3 million in tax money to the development Erie people. What a shame. A couple of months ago, I stood before you and brought up some questions about 12th and Green Garden and the old Lord property being sold for $375,000 to an Ohio firm. I questioned the price and one response that came from my question was, "It had remediation problems." During my investigation, I discovered that Develop Erie received a $1.2 million grant to remediate that property and spent $880,000 remediating that property. That is just one of the mistakes that was made by that group and we as taxpayers pay dearly for those mistakes. The school district traveled to Harrisburg yesterday. They don't have enough money. They need to quit begging for money and start seeking a fair and equitable tax system. That's the only cure for the financial woes facing northwestern Pennsylvania. One of the reasons I'm here today is because our city is at a crossroads where political correctness is the norm. But we, what we really need is political honesty. For you see, the government we have right now isn't working for the people that are paying for it. This is a disgrace and it falls right at your feet. You have to do something about it and quit being correct. Try to be honest. Eleven years ago, council was a jubilant group. We had a mayor who had the seven members of council's trust, could expect candor, were brought into the decision-making process, and were never blindsided. How does that work for you people now? I, for one, think it's disgraceful how the system has been manipulated by the administration to bring your decision-making process into question. If there were truly conflicts of interest, they were occurring before this last vote was taken for CDBG money. Conflicts are commonplace in this building, but usually the results of the conflict is where the administration was leading it. The conclusion to many issues always seems to end up the way the administration had wished. Now we have a political newcomer who has thrown a monkey wrench into this process. Now we, now we have a political newcomer throwing a monkey wrench into it. We don't need another code enforcement officer, but also don't need the distribution of these funds from our federal tax dollars being funneled to pet projects. That sort of monkey business has no place in a struggling community. Conflicts of interest. In my humble opinion, whenever there are votes cast, we as taxpayers are entitled to know your involvement in the groups that you are voting for to receive the different monies. Your integrity is a question. The board and authorities that seek a presence on these boards and authorities might not be looking for your wisdom. They are probably looking for your connections and cooperation. And thank you for your time.
Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard?
Yes. My name is Stephen Gleason. I live on West 9th Street, around the corner from Strongbisson High School. I'd like to ask everybody in the room a question if I could, but I want you to just answer it to yourself. How many of you have lost a child? How many of you have experienced upon a child who's losing their life? Well, sadly to say, I've experienced both. And the pain for both never go away. The latter was last summer when I came upon a 17-year-old boy who had just been shot. I'm a retired registered nurse. It took 25 minutes for emergency care to get there. And there was nothing I could do but hold and try to comfort this boy in my arms while I watched his life drain from his body. And he was pronounced dead. What I didn't know, and the reason why it took emergency care so long to get there, was that there had been four shootings in two hours. Now, the sum that the individuals for the JFK, Martin Luther King Center, and Booker T. Washington are asking for is a drop in the bucket. Just a drop. And it's nothing. It's nothing. And they want to spend it and invest it on our future, on the youth of our city. And the people who mainly want to do that have been, well, written up in the newspaper and they pretty much saying that, "Well, they're wrong." Well, they're not wrong. You know, this is our future, our children. And if we can prevent one child from losing their life, or one child, or one individual from taking a life through these programs, is it worth the amount of money they're asking for? Oh, yeah. It's worth that. It's really worth that. So I'm asking you to please fund these agencies. Because none of these agencies that want the money, they're in my neighborhood, doesn't affect me directly, but the, but the youth of this city and the future of this city does. So please, vote for them. Thank you.
My name is Veronica Rexford. I live at 4124 West Ridge Road and I work at the Quality of Life Learning Center on East 19th Street. Since we last spoke, the 2014-2015 reports have come out from HUD. I had the opportunity to take a look at the reports that the city of Erie submitted to the Department of the Treasury. From 2014 to 2015, ending June 30th of last year, the CDBG allocation was a very similar dollar amount, $2.8 million, give or take $49,000. And the budget for public services in that fiscal year was $951,979. Was 19.08% of the allocation. If I recall correctly, Ms. Green walked us through a process by which the city had an option through a grandfather clause to go back to either a percentage or a dollar amount from a year in the 1980s. The maximum, if I recall correctly, was in the general neighborhood of 26% or $800,000. Both in this proposed budget and in the most recent figures that are completed that I can access from HUD, the administration chose not to maximize the allocation to public services by far. The city's accomplishment report, which is a report to HUD saying this is how we spent the money and this is how many people benefited from it. We talked about some previous fiscal years. And as I stated, this most recent one has become available since the last time we spoke. Under Public Services, Eligible Activities, Youth Services, Number of Young People Affected, 302. Crime Awareness, and I'm not really sure, I get to ask HUD this question tomorrow, is overtime crime awareness. 38,230 people. Although we haven't discussed senior services for that, that much for, just for the heck of it, I'll let you know that only 136 seniors benefited from that year's public service allocation. Again, $500,000 to enforcement and in that fiscal year, a total of only $51,000 to other public services organizations, including the community centers that we're talking about today. All I can keep going back to is what are our priorities as a community? I happen to be an ambassador to a statewide after-school program whose mission is to lobby, well, not lobby, but encourage elected officials at the state level to fund after-school programs. As you can imagine, that's a little bit of a tough job today when we'd like to keep the doors of the schools open, let alone fund after-school programs. But I can tell you that I have access to a lot of research that includes the fact that every dollar spent on after-school programming saves $2.50 in juvenile justice costs. Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard?
Good morning, Council. Chantel Hillier, Executive Director of the Booker T. Washington Center. First of all, I want to thank you for your time and opportunity and consideration to have this opportunity to talk to you. I want to shed a little light in regards to the situation of people saying that we're begging. We're not begging. We're just asking for individual dollars to help our community. And those dollars, quite frankly, are because of the people that we service that are coming into this city. It's the underserved population. And so, when I hear people say we're begging for money, that kind of gets me upset because at the end of the day, aren't we a community? Aren't these funds available to help the community? So we should be helping specifically with the increase in violence, our youth. And if we say that we're here for our youth, I cannot tell. I, I just, it baffles me to sit up here and argue about, as someone said, "A drop in the bucket" because it really is a drop in the bucket. Ms. Rexford just talked about after-school programs. We haven't been funded for after-school programming. Who knows? But we still continue to provide that service, right? And so, the bottom line here is that, when are we going to get past this? And my organization has been drugged through the mud for, for no apparent reason at all, when really all we're trying to do is help youth in today's society. But it seems like it's more than just the dollars. You want to cast, and I'm not saying you, but people want to cast a shadow as if there's incompetence. And I can tell you right now, I'm not incompetent. And none of my other colleagues are incompetent. I'm educated. They're educated. What's incompetent is why we're not getting any funds. And whoever are giving these funds away, maybe they're incompetent. Because at the end of the day, I'm going to fight for my organization and we're going to continue to fight. And I don't care what you say. You can say it's a conflict. Oh, it's not a conflict. Who cares? I care. This community and the people in these chairs care. So why isn't the people that's distributing these funds don't care? We need to figure something out, as I said earlier. Okay, if you know funds are being cut, why hasn't somebody from the administration said, "Hey, dollars are going to be cut. Let's get together and see what we can do"? You wait till the last minute. We were going to get $6,000. It was cool. Wasn't a conflict then. Then when somebody comes and asks for 12, now it's a conflict. And what really pisses me off is the simple fact that you keep, everybody keeps saying the centers. It's other organizations that are getting money behind this too. So that told me, it's a direct reflection of you trying to close the centers down. You keep saying the centers. The paper keeps saying the centers. Well, what about the other organizations that are getting money? They're asked for additional funds. It's not just the centers. So quit making it seem like it's just the centers. And I'm an open book and I know my other colleagues are open books. If you want to know what the money, where the money is going or anything, don't hesitate to come ask because I'm here to, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Please make the correct vote today. Please. Or we're going to continue to have these spikes in violence. Okay? Please make the right vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard?
My name is Becky Hudson. I live at 1051 West 30th Street. I'm going to speak on behalf of the children. The children are our future leaders. We have to invest in our children. And I don't care what minority you come from. I don't care where you live at. I work with kids on a daily basis as volunteering with them. And I see many things. And these kids need the support. They need the support. They've got parents working three, three jobs, two jobs. They've got parents that, you know, just, they're going through so much. And they need these centers. Not just these centers, but they need the community to back them up and show support because these kids feel that there is no hope any longer. Something has got to give. Something has got to give. And I just pray that you guys do find it in your hearts, that you guys will be able to continue to help fund these organizations as well as other organizations that may come up and other centers that may come up. So that way that the future of every one of us will be benefited because... will be benefited, because our youth is our future, they will be the ones taking care of us. We have to invest in them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we'll continue on with the meeting.
Okay, this will take us to our new business resolution sponsored by Mr. Winarski and seconded by Mr. Kowalski, authorizing the mayor to file an application for financial assistance with the U.S. Department of HUD, which has indicated its willingness to make available a grant to carry out the CDBG program in the amount of $2,804,599, home in the amount of $658,639, and ESG in the amount of $252,664. And this further authorized act, as in authorize a representative of the City of Erie to sign any and all documents in regards to these programs. This resolution further acts to repeal an recent amended resolution number six, journal number 13475A, which was enacted on May 4th, 2016.
Okay, just so that the community knows, when we were in the caucus room, we met with Mr. Carley, our city solicitor, and under third-class city code optional charter that, for the City of Erie, we need four yes votes in order for this to pass. So I just wanted to make that clear to everyone, that there needs to be four yes votes in order for this to pass.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jones.
Before we get into conversation, I just wanted to also bring up the fact that we as a council, as well as other city officials, last week met via the phone and read letters and information from HUD and our advisor to HUD in relation to certain conflicts that may or may not, or potentially may be connected to some of us who are voting or can vote today on this council. And there's still some question, I think, on certain conflicts, or level of conflict, and whether it's significant enough for us to vote or not, vote or abstain. But what was very clear was that the funder, which is HUD, has their opinion, and they were very direct about their opinion, on what they feel needs to happen for any of the $2.9 million to be released to this community. And so what's going to happen today is going to be based on that, in my opinion, and just what I know based on our conversation. So there are still questions, is there conflict, yes, no, whatever. But at the end of the day, the funder has told us if there are certain things that don't happen, they will withhold not just the proposed amended funds from this community, but the entire $2.9 million or so from this community, which is an unacceptable reality that we cannot afford to have on any level. And I'll close by saying, this does speak to the importance of the community having to find ways to help to fund ourselves as well. Because as long as we're open and always looking just to funders, we're always going to be open and vulnerable to their decisions on whether you can have the money or not, whether it's a conflict in their opinion or not. So I think it's important that we learn a lot from this situation today. Again, just wanted to make sure that the citizens knew that the votes today are going to be based on the funder giving us information on how to move forward and if we are going to have or not have this entire $2.9 million. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Arrington.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and supporting council, and I'm going to let you all know that I will be abstaining for voting today, but I'm also going to let you know why. It's a shame, as an elected official, when we do something that we think is right, that we get reprimanded for it. Since I've been on city council, I've been shaking the tree up here, and I want the community to know that I'm going to continue shaking this tree. Because we not only need change out there, we need change in here. It's sad what goes on, and it's not in our control. I also want to talk about, over the last four days, the violence. I have lost a loved one, two, actually. One of the young men that was just shot and killed was my cousin. My husband just lost his mother the day before that, so right now my emotions are high, and I'm dealing with a lot of stuff, but I had to be here today for our community. Because one thing I want everybody to understand, we need options for our community, and the community center is an option. It's an option for these young men out here playing with guns, either to go in the centers and play basketball games, or go play Wild Wild West in the street all day. Because I'm going to tell you, a lot of us in here, we are the products of the community centers. I am a product of the community centers. And I really truly believe, as a community, we ought to do whatever we need to do to help our community centers. I'm not just talking about the four community centers, or the three, like everybody's saying. We have a lot of people out here doing the same thing. It's all about the children at the end of the day. So I just wanted you all to know why I'm abstaining, because of the potential ethnic conflict of interest. Because that $2.9 million, we need that in our community. And I'm a firm believer, if we believe it, God will achieve it, because something good is going to come out of what's happening here today and now. Thank you and God bless.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Witherspoon.
I didn't realize that I had a conflict of interest when serving on the board of JFK. It was never brought to my attention, and I resigned from the board for other reasons, and I still love JFK, and I still will continue to help them. But I did receive from HUD that I would have to be off the board for one year before I could vote on anything that JFK, any money JFK received from the city. So that's there, it's not a law, but it's a rule made by HUD. Conflict of interest, you know, that has hit me twice, surprisingly. One, I served on the board for one meeting for the university, Clarion University, and I was so happy, because I knew, as a board member of the university, I can help minority students out of Erie County, students period out of Erie County, to get additional funds, have somebody they can go to that's sitting in a seat of power. Then Harrisburg called and said, "You have to resign because of a possible conflict of interest." I said, "I know how to abstain when it comes to the Order of the General's Office." They said, "You have a choice. You either stay on the board, or you lose your job." I'm still working for the Order of the General. They pay the bills. So now, here it comes again. I was not aware, I was not told, that there's a possible conflict of interest. In this case, they say conflict of interest. I helped build the Booker T. Washington Center from ground to where it's at today as deputy director at the time. I worked with Mr. Harrison for years. I played ball in all the gyms. I worked with Mr. Alex Thompson. And I played ball in every one of those centers. Some of you here today, we played together. Some of you cheered me when I scored, and most of you booed me when I scored. But the point is, I don't think it's right, I don't agree with it. But I do believe, and I could promise you, with the balance of my two years here, we will be on top of CDBG grants and anything else from this point. The points that Mr. Horton made, that Chantel made, that Mr. Wagner made, and believe it or not, Mr. Barnes made, were good, to the point where we were not involved at the onset of CDBG. And that's where the problems lie. And the conflict of interest was through at us, and we didn't know what hit us. So as a result, that I must abstain in order for us not to lose the total dollar amount, it's not right, it's not fair, but that's the way it is. And in the words of one of my dear friends who passed, John Heran, he would always tell me, "Mel, you got to live by the golden rules." I said, "John, what's that?" He'd say, "He who has the gold, make the rules." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Any other comments from council? Senator Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. President. My original vote in favor of the funding for the community centers was done for several reasons. The first and foremost was investing in our people, especially our youth. You have been said by many members of the panel here that, you know, that's really a major issue in our city, is trying to keep our youth busy, and to try to give them a chance, so they have other opportunities instead of gathering and not being where they should, or trying to be in an organized manner, to try to do the right thing. And also to provide investment directly into our neighborhood centers. And also, the other reason that I've noted is preferring not to fund a staff member out of a grant, which I know we've done many times before, but I know we've also talked about trying to solve these problems ourself and not fund everything, all our staff positions through grants. And also, I've noted this earlier, is that trying to look at this position and try to make the best of the resources we do have, and make sure that, you know, everything's being done correctly in the best of our ability, in order to make sure we need that position. Due to the current issue with the conflict of interest, I believe that I may be the only person left from the original vote, I am the only person, I believe, from the original vote, where we voted yes to reroute the funding. I still stand by my vote, but according to the guidelines that we are being told, if we don't have four oaths, we lose the entire amount of funding, and we definitely do not want to do that. So definitely, it's a tough decision today, and it's definitely a decision that we have to make for the overall benefit of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President. Just would like to share my, the fact that I will also be abstaining from this vote, due to the fact that a younger sibling of mine is employed by the teen center at the Y, which happened well after this whole process got started. But now, at this point of a vote, he is employed there. And at the letter of the law, I have to abstain from this vote. Interestingly enough, this, his employment, and my connection with the reason I have to abstain, has nothing to do with the amendments, or the amended organizations that we wanted to include or enhance the level of funding that they received, but because it's in the budget at all, I'm going to have to abstain. And I have to agree with what has been said by so many, and I think which is also the sentiment of everyone in the room, is that we've got to do better. This was a unique opportunity, in my opinion, because there was money that had not been already allocated, that had not already been assigned to the general fund of this current year, which often is the issue with CDBG funds. A lot of the funds that we are approving are helping to deal with the budget, the current budget. When we passed the current budget, we were assuming that many of the things we are looking to pass today would be funded, and so it gave us a balanced budget at the end of last year for this year, which is a really, at the end of the day, when we really look at it, is probably a really bad practice to operate under. And so, those things have to change. I've been on this council for quite some time, and we've had varying levels of involvement in processes, and varying levels of involvement in how things are done, but this is different. We've seen over the last couple of years that this council has, for a variety of reasons and in a variety of ways, our vote has been minimized in a very significant way. And that's not all right. When we look at the most, those in our community who need the most support, absolutely, there are, the African-American community, black community, whatever language you want to use, many of us do need this support. There's a lot of poor and destitute white people out here too. And there's a lot of poor and destitute new Americans that are here too, that would benefit and do benefit from all of the nonprofit organizations that serve this community, not just the three, because if, again, if we were to be honest, there were multiple other organizations who were involved in this, in what we wanted to change or the amendment, but they were never mentioned. I watched the news, and I'd never really heard them. And even in the print, they were like, you know, the three centers were bold, and these other groups were like the fine print. I think that's a problem as well. So it's important that we understand why, and I'm taking this time, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Witherspoon, I'm taking this time to explain why we're voting the way we are. But I think at the end of the day, that golden rule has been an issue for a long time. And I think it's important that we, as a community, recognize that we have some gold ourselves, and we need to start allocating our own gold to the things that we really care about. And your gold may not be money, but it may be your time. What I learned from people like Ms. Johnson in the back room when I was a child, she taught me and helped me to say, you know, "It's time to stop playing basketball and come in here and sweep this floor." At the Booker T. Washington Center, where I lived for 19 years of my life, one block away, free lunches, got my second job there, but you know what? When I needed the services, they were available. When I needed a place to go, it was available. But here's the flip side, when I didn't need them anymore, I began to volunteer there. And many times, we need to begin to invest ourselves back into the places we receive support and help from, and we don't do that well enough. Because it takes money to cut the grass, takes money to do all this stuff, takes money to clean, but it doesn't take anything for me to bring my lawnmower and not charge them to go cut the grass, which will serve to save money for them to put it towards youth programming. Not only is there issues in the community, in governing bodies, and funding sources, that is absolutely true, we need to continue to deal with that, but we have investment that we have to make in ourselves as well. And I think that's extremely important. And I'm a product of the Booker T., of course, my parents were here, but the Booker T. Washington Center, when I was sneaking around, I was sneaking to the Erie One. Got in trouble, but I was sneaking to the Erie One. I wasn't sneaking to the corner, smoking and shooting and fighting. A lot of our kids don't have an option to sneak to the Erie One. They don't have an option to sneak to the JFK, because they don't have the funding to have the programs that are available for them to go into and enjoy. Again, I don't want to sound preachy, but I think at the end of the day, we've got a lot of work to do on the governmental side, we've got a lot of work to do on the community side, because where your heart and our heart is, that's where we're going to put our treasure. And if we're not investing beyond our language and our words, then I'm not sure, not sure if we have enough invested in our community centers ourselves, in our community ourselves. So it takes all of us to make it happen. So again, I will be abstaining because of the conflict related to the YMCA, which again is not any of the amended organizations or community centers that were involved. again, is not any of the amended organizations or community centers that were involved. But for the perception, and HUD has given us the ruling that they will not accept our, they won't even accept our application if we don't abstain. And so that's why we're moving forward in this way. Thank you, Mr. President, appreciate the extra time.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any other?
Mr. President, one last thing. When I had my say, I meant to tell everybody, my conflict of interest was with the Booker T. Washington Center, that's why I'm abstaining.
All right. And I just wanted, just to have a few comments, and then we'll take this vote. The city comprehensive plan is a framework for us to make decisions to move this community forward. And we're going to have these conversations throughout the next, I believe, the next decade or two, because as we move this city forward, it's about, how do we create the city that we want for ourselves? Charles Bukie warns us that spreading out limited resources equally across the city, what we've been doing, does not generate the substantial changes needed to transform a community. And what it does is merely manage the slow decline of the city. I believe that we need to stabilize and increase our housing stock, because in doing so, that increases our tax base. As I sat here today, I listened, and I hear you. We have to have serious conversations about where we put our resources and the investments that we make, not just here in City Hall, but to Mr. Jones' point, as a community, and what they do over at county council, and what we do with our philanthropy in this community. The issue of providing opportunities is important for this community, and we need to keep this dialogue going. But at the end of the day, I also believe that our children, regardless of their zip code, deserve a clean, safe house to go to. And we've cut our code enforcement in half. When we cut the police, and we cut the fire, and everybody sees that, we cut them in half. We need to have good housing for our community, and every child deserves a good home. So with that, that concludes my comments, and we'll take the vote.
Roll call, Mrs. Arrington abstains, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones abstains, Mr. Potowski, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon abstains, Mr. Mersky. This resolution will adopt by yays, four nays, zero.
And with that, we'll dispense of committee reports, since we'll have those next meeting, and this meeting is adjourned.
City council adjourns at 9:56. Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Potowski, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon.